That's great. This morning, I have been the Father becoming in your name, thanking you for all your blessings that have been bestowed upon us. Thank you for our, even thank you for our last night's sleep and it's going to be early rise. We thank you for starting us out on another day's journey. We pray that you bless this country, our nation, be with us, watch over and protect it, keep us safe from all here common dangers. Blessed is to make the right decisions, help us to do the thing that's right in your eyesight, give us strength, for we know that you're able, you know that you've got all powers in your hand, forgive us for all our sins and oh God, make a way for us out of nowhere. We thank you right now. Look on these commissioners, look on the political opponents, all the wonderful people on this. Father, we pray that you be with us in these times and in these days. We ask you these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Once again, I would like to welcome everyone this morning. We'll move right along here with our first order of business, just the approval of minutes from our April 28, 2020 special call meeting. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
With the proof.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving along, I have the consent agenda, items two through six. Do I have any items, any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna raise my hand because I know it's difficult to figure out where the sound's coming from in here. Just a couple of things real quick. The two items on there that have to do with the utilities at 136 and I-75, the wastewater treatment plant, the transmission and collection lines. I would just offer that if the board approves those, it will also be pending county attorney approval. We didn't have that language on there, but I wanted that to be incorporated if you could do that. A brief comment on the CARES Act funding for the FAA. I've spoken to Mr. Scott, I know I had a call from at least one county commissioner. That approach to utilizing, potentially utilizing any funds from that CARES Act associated with the airport is not going to be as ambiguous or arbitrary as it might appear from the language in here. Those would have to be qualified expenses. I'll be meeting with Mr. Scott, we'll talk about that, we spoke yesterday. And we will make some determination on whether or not we have qualified expenses that comply with that particular act before anything occurs. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris, appreciate that. Once again, do I have any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
With the proof.
Commissioner Richardson?
I just wanted to make sure that we change the, that the number four on that CARES Act reflects the discussion that Mr. Harris did say, and not at the discretion, just remove the language that says at the discretion of the airport manager.
Do it. No, do it. Do I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Yes, sir.
Second. Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving ahead, I'd like to get an update this morning from Mr. Kerry Waldron, if you'd please come forth.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning.
Morning.
Give you a quick update on our COVID-19. We will be announcing one additional case this morning, which will take us to case number 142. We are in the process now of looking through the information and the medical records this individual is hospitalized, and it appears not to be connected to any existing cases. Also, so far in our community, we have done 1,200 tests, of which 1,057 have come back negative. And we will be doing, as we sent out late yesterday afternoon, we are going to be setting up and doing some community-wide testing as a drive-through. I think all of y'all may have received a copy of our flyer, and I'll leave some at the back of the room here when we leave. But we've established currently three dates that we'll be doing mass testing, which is on Thursday, May the 7th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Tuesday, May the 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And then Thursday, May the 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Based upon that response, we will evaluate and reevaluate if we need to continue. The state is pushing us to do some more community-wide testing, just to see what it looks like out in the community, not necessarily in long-term care facilities, although there's still concern with those, but we are going to open this up to the public. And you need no signs or symptoms are needed, you need to, no appointment is needed, but you must bring a valid ID. So we'll take some information from you, and you will need to remain in your vehicles at all times, and we will get you through just as quickly as possible. We'll have teams set up and established to do this, do this testing. This test will, if you're asymptomatic, no symptoms, and not a priority, this test will go to the Quest Lab, and it'll take several days for the results to come back. If someone were to come that is symptomatic, and that meets priority one, priority two testing, we will test them and send that to the state lab. And we've already had some phone calls regarding this, and we've got a list of names up for folks to come out. We just asked folks, you don't have to be there right at nine o'clock, we'll be there from nine till 11:00 a.m. And if need be, we'll stay after 11:00 a.m., but can come and line up, and we can make sure that we get everyone taken care of. Again, those dates are this Thursday, then Tuesday, then the following Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Just a quick update on our cases, 122 of our 142 cases are connected to long-term care facilities, 20 cases are not connected. We announced late yesterday afternoon our 17th death, that death is connected to a long-term care facility. The individual had been hospitalized for many weeks and had several comorbidity issues. We have completed, as of yesterday, in Suwannee County, all of our long-term care facilities and assisted living facilities have been mass tested. Surrey Place and Rising Oaks were the last two facilities. They were completed yesterday at Surrey Place. There were 162 staff and residents that were tested, and in Rising Oaks, there were 43. So we should have those results back here this week. It's taking around three to four days for those results to come back. And if I have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, Mr. Waldron, that I appreciate the, with the results that we have gotten so far from Dalling Park, appreciate the effort that they have made, and the other facilities that I believe will come in as well, with the same type of numbers, to keep this virus down. I think it's extraordinary, sets an example for not just all of our facilities, but also the state's facilities, because that's something that really could have gotten out of hand very quickly, and has been, as we see in, in specific facilities, it's been a problem.
Well, we're very thankful that the resources that have been made available the last few weeks, if we'd have had those resources early on, there could have very much been a different ballgame at Suwannee Healthcare. But with the focus being placed in the last few weeks on long-term health cares, we've tried to give all of our facilities every bit of help and assistance that we could muster from the state. I will tell you, because I am responsible for Lafayette County as well, we do have three cases in Lafayette County. Two are connected, individuals happen to work in Live Oak but live in Suwannee County, but they do have a case in a long-term care facility over there that we, we'll be announcing this morning. And so we've done, just like we have with all of our other facilities, we are offering mass testing, we're offering incident management teams to come in. Matter of fact, my staff will be going in tomorrow to this facility to do our inspection and our assessment. We've contacted ACHA, they're aware of everything, so we'll continue to work in both counties, but we certainly want to try to get ahead of this to keep it from rapidly going through the facility. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Waldron?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a brief comment, I too appreciate what you're doing over there, but I do have a concern, that as soon as this testing that's going to be occurring hits social media, we're going to have a traffic jam. And what I'd like to say right now is that as soon as we run out of tests, it won't be the fault of the Health Department locally. I don't have any reason to believe that, you know, some people that are panicking even now in the community, are going to line up out there, and you mentioned a moment ago, a lot of people that have zero symptoms, you're going to test anyway. We could have a rush on the Health Department. I don't want to see them run out of test kits, but it's a very real possibility, given what we've seen around the nation. And I just want to point out right now that I've already spoken to Sharon about communicating our concern with running out of kits, and I don't want to see that occur, but it could occur. And if it does, it absolutely is not the fault of the local community, the county commission, the Health Department, or anyone else. We're just gonna have to work with what we have for now.
I would like to say also to follow up with that, that in respect out of everybody, and mainly the people that do have symptoms, I mean, I ask people to be respectful, don't just go just because you don't have anything better to do. I mean, if we got people that need assistance, that's the ones I want to have a test, I don't, you know, I don't want to run out of tests and be waiting on tests, and then we got 10 people that are feeling terrible and really have symptoms, and those tests got used up.
Well, and you're very correct, because just because you have no symptoms and you test negative, does not mean that some future point, you could potentially contract the disease. But I know that the state, and state surgeon general and the governor are encouraging community-wide testing, and they're warning us to test at least 2% of our population, and we're almost there, we're about 170 shy of where we need to be to have to reach that 2%. I know that Cindy and I, my director of nursing, Ms. Morgan and I, went up to Jasper yesterday morning to see that they were doing their drive-through clinic, so we went up to see how they were operating.
In respect out of everybody, and mainly the people that do have symptoms, I mean, I ask people to be respectful, don't just go just because you don't have anything better to do. I mean, if we got people that need assistance, that's the ones that have tests, I don't want to run out of tests, we got 10 people that are feeling terrible and really have symptoms, and those tests got used up.
Well, and you're very correct, because just because you have no symptoms and you test negative, does not mean that some future point, you could potentially contract the disease. But I know that the state, and state surgeon general and the governor are encouraging community-wide testing, and they're warning us to test at least 2% of our population, and we're almost there, we're about 170 shy of where we need to be to have to reach that 2%. I know that Cindy and I, my director of nursing, Ms. Morgan and I, went up to Jasper yesterday morning to see that they were doing their drive-through clinic, so we went up to see how they were operating, and they had roughly 30 to 35 people come through yesterday. And so I think that we'll probably see an early rush, and then later in the day, I think it'll be steady, and I don't know that it'll be overrun. And if we need to, you know, we can always shut it down and reconfigure and reassess and add a few more days if we need to. So we're gonna try it on Thursday to see how long it goes.
That's true. I also like to, just for the public sake, remind people that testing negative, you're only negative until you're positive, so in reality, just because you test negative doesn't mean that you're ready to go out in the public and enjoy the regular, average life. I mean, we just have to still stay vigilant, because somebody out there may be positive and still capacity.
We're still encouraging folks to stay home, that to practice social distancing. If you need to make a trip to the grocery store, the pharmacy, or wherever, please go there, you can go home, but still be very, very mindful and take some responsibility for your own health, because you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. You get tested today, if you're negative, you're negative at that point in time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Waldron, just for further knowledge as well, I want to make sure everyone knows that this is not a test to tell you if you have had it at some point in time, but I've gotten calls about that.
No, sir, this test is going to be a swab of the throat, and be honest with me, the testing part is not purely fun, because if you are symptomatic, we will swab your nose and pretty much cut back to the brain, and it's, it's not fun. And the throat will be in your tonsils, and we'll put those in two, and then we'll send that to the Quest Lab. And they usually turn those around three to four days, so we're optimistic that we'll get those results back timely. But yeah, it's not a fun process.
Thank you so much for your comments this morning.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I'd like you, sir, I hope someone, if I'm prepared, happy birthdays in order.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I come to a county to be a free, normal birthday.
Thank you, Captain. We appreciate it, Mr. Waldron. Thank you, sir. The next up, I'd like to say, Mr. Gibson, quick update, EOC. Welcome.
Good morning. All right, since the last week's meeting, we did receive some test kits, so we're supporting the Department of Health, and was able to supply the whole 300 test kits. If they find that they are running short, we'll put in a resource request to the state if we feel like more needed. Since last week's meeting, we did have an update on the PPE equipment, we continue to receive. Since last week's meeting, we have given out another 7,700 surgical masks, 350 face shields, 448 N95s, 178 gowns, 300 shoe covers, protective goggles, and several gallons of hand sanitizer. We continue to stay in contact with all of our, excuse me, nursing homes and AL labs, to make sure that they have plenty of PPE. If they fall short, we put in a request form, and just continue to make sure there's supply, we want to keep them as safe as possible. And we continue to do our day-to-day, which is, we've got our local mitigation strategy plan that is going to be updated, that'll be due in July, and we're eventually working on that. Our logistics plan, and we're working on a mask gear plan to come with sheltering, PPE, and mass transportation, should that ever be needed. And then I'm excited to tell you about this, we're working on acquiring an image assessment, a disaster management software program, that'll end up being beneficial to the entire county. So more information on that to kind of, we're able to acquire, we're checking with the state to see if we can use some of our funding for that.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day. At this time, I'd like to call Chief Ed Hand. The chief is going to introduce some folks that we've been waiting forever to meet, and finally, we have them do it this morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, before I introduce them, just give you a little update on how things have been going with fire rescue. As everybody knows, last Friday was, we take over with Lake City Medical Center, Suwannee Campus of the, of the hospital. That was a very seamless transition, we had no issues whatsoever, and so far, everything's been operated great. We also have gotten some of our PPE orders in that we had placed several months ago, that have come in now off of back order, along with the PPE that Miss Henson has been able to provide us, and we're in really good shape now on our PPE moving forward, so I don't see any issues with that. I would like to let the public know, for those that are watching, that if it's still safe, you call 911 if you need us. Our, our call-in has been down, as it is across the state with the MS, and also people who want to go to hospitals, if you need 911, definitely call us, it's, it's safe for us to come here home and take care of you. So don't, you know, don't hesitate to call us if anybody's needed. So if you have any questions for me right now, before we move forward introducing the guys in the hospital?
Any questions?
So it is my pleasure to introduce you first, and then he'll introduce the rest of the staff from Lake City Medical Center that's here, but Noel Walker is the Public Relations Manager for Lake City Medical Center, and he's going to go up and we'll be speculating about, about the hospital answers.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you very much, and it's our honor to be here this morning, we appreciate the invite to come out, so thank you very much. This morning, with me, I have Dr. Nakki, our medical director of the hospital here, Dr. Kristen, and then I also brought with me our chief executive officer of this market, Rick Hayley. So I'm gonna ask, really ask him to come up and field any, anything he's got, and tell you what we're doing.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Kind of a long walk up there. First and foremost, what I want to do is, is I want to congratulate you, give credit to Kerry, what he's done, I mean, his hospital system, it seems like I've been working close with the citizens there in Suwannee County, and the work that this Department of Health is doing is stellar, especially when you look across the United States, if you look at the allocation of resources to the Department of Health throughout the country, you are doing a phenomenal job, and we appreciate your partnership very, very much on that. But just a quick update on that, I'll tell you, we do have 23 Suwannee County residents admitted into the hospital today, a couple more coming in, and a lot, a few of them here towards the end were not related to the, the facility that was here, so we're starting to see a little bit of an uptick of those things. The other thing, just on a quick note, is that if people are having symptoms and they're sick, it's okay to get tested in the hospital through the emergency department. That's what they, that's what people did when they thought they had the flu a year ago, you come in, you get seen, you get tested. So testing supplies and the ability to provide services will still be done through emergency room. We don't do outpatient testing, but we do, if you're symptomatic, you need to see by physicians do that, which could help relieve a little bit of the burden off of people that are coming up to the drive-through sick. Because guess what, your next step's coming where you probably need to go to the hospital. So that will help maybe cut out a step, or maybe the service of supplies. So there's my thing on that, but we've been dealing with COVID, obviously, as a hospital scenario, very attempted for the last couple of months, what every day is going on. First and foremost, we cannot be more happy to be a part of this community. I know there's a lot of questions around the whys and the hows of everything that happened, but I will tell you, it's an honor to be able to serve emergency services in this community, kind of like Chief Hand said, it was, he's been very nice to me once, and we had a couple of little initiatives that would be expected, but all in all, I feel like the staff that we've been able to retain in this community are doing a good job, they're learning new things, they're getting some new equipment, the attitudes seem to be very well. Dr. Niko Kristen, if you stand up, I know everybody's got a good look at him, is the medical director for the facility, he's the face, he's the medical direction of what's going on in his team, so he's here, he works like 15 shifts a month, so he's here in the community a lot, and we're putting a lot on him to be able to get the word out about the clinical care. Of course, Dr. Nakki has been in the community for a very, very long time, and I brought him as an illustration to, people are talking about care leading the community, well, all his patients, if he admitted last week, are still being admitted to Dr. Nakki, so Dr. Nakki's patients, he's also got an arrangement that other physicians within the community have been through him, so it becomes a seamless process. If you come to our ER, and you need to be admitted, we can get you into the hospital as quick as possible. So, once again, I'm very excited to be here, for what we, our pledge here, our mission is, is above all else, we're committed to carrying a broken human life. You'll hear me say that a lot. Why do I say that a lot? Because if you work in our organization, you have to believe that. You have to be someone who comes in with a mission, that we are here to do something for someone else, whether we have deployed a co-worker or a commission, a community member, above all else, that's what we're striving to do, and we give you our promises above all else, we'll do that for you. So, any further questions? We're going to be here, you guys can come by. Oh, last plug that I want to do, to Chief Hand, you've seen proximization healthcare has been taking a hit, because nobody's going to the hospital. And kind of like I said, with the flu swab, we usually see big spikes in the fall because of the flu season, with things that are going. Those patients with COVID aren't coming to the hospital, they're waiting, they're staying. It is safe to come to the hospital. The state of Florida's opened back up businesses, a lot of different things. We began elective surgeries again, we've got the hospital socially distanced, very much like you guys who are here today. Wayfinding crew, designated parking lots, masks are going to be given to everybody, so it is safe. And I want to get that word out to the community, that they can come back to the hospital. It's not a place you're going to come get COVID, it is actually a place we control it very well, and help get people on the bed for what we're going to do. And we need to see that as an industry, we need to see that as a community, this is what's going to keep our conference driving in these communities and keep docs here, so it's very important. So I do call on you guys to assist us with getting that word out, we'll get something out in the academic ad as well, talking about the safety of a lot of the talking ones.
I would just leave off that myself and the mayor and you can sit down for a week Friday, they have a small employee grant that they're doing there, we went, but anyway, we took some time to sit down, we just about have hour, we had a good conversation, I really appreciate you taking the time to just kind of ease some of our concerns. I will say, when I showed up there, I was really impressed by the enthusiasm of the employees, and just really ready to make a difference, and move every, the process forward. That, that really made me feel a lot better about the situation. I understand, still, you know, with the jobs that we've lost, it hurts all of us, but at the end of the day, we have to move forward, we have to, we have to do, you know, like we discussed the other day, it doesn't matter what we're in, it doesn't matter if we're a commission, it doesn't matter if we're a hospital, it's all business. You have to run a life business, you have to move forward, have to be successful. I think one of the things that people really didn't understand, or maybe still don't, and I don't want to speak out of time here, but to some extent, the company that owned the hospital, we was going to be in serious trouble without these gentlemen coming in to take over. I don't know if that was planned, I don't know if it was a year, I don't know how that was, but those folks was in serious trouble. So, at the end of the day, I think we should probably be sitting here being grateful that we have an organization that's, I heard from state lawyers in the country, far as the amount of hospitals on, that are taking over, and that, that means everyone is out of public own business, and I feel that would have been handy, and that, as far as the hospital's concerned, and the beds, that's something, as a, as a board and as a community, we all want beds here, and we want to have a bigger hospital than what we have, but I feel like too, for that to happen, we need to get more residences in this, in our county, and we need to bring more jobs here, all those things, kind of be into sustaining what it takes to run a business as hospital, I understand what you're saying, but I still want people to understand that I'm sure, I've heard about not having the part that, you know, this was the taking. But at this time, I mean, I'm sure some of you have some questions, kind of unanswered, that was, feel free to speak out.
Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
I want to, because it was a part of that conversation, so I don't know what all, but you guys had spoken about, so I got just a couple of questions, actually three, one of them doesn't have to be asked, I'm probably just more curious, anything else, but the ones that I, how many employees did you wind up having to let go, that we didn't notice?
Actually, just for clarification, because I want to make this story, this right, because I have, there's a beautiful reporter out of Al Dax, who keeps missing our position. We didn't let any, that was really on the CHS side of the business. They shut down services like, I don't have a final number for that, what I do know is that we retained 50 employees in this community here.
Okay. Second question is, is all the certificate need for the hospital, how does that, how does that, is that affected, are you guys, I assume you're operating on the same certificate need that the hospital had in the first place, but how is the, the fact that the hospital's certificate need, I would assume included inpatient facilities as well? So what happens to that part of the certificate, would another, if another group wanted to come in and file for a certificate need, could they do that under the inpatient part of it, or is it closed out basically?
You know what, you don't know the answer to that. I hadn't, like, I mean, if someone would come in under a certificate need, built by hospital here, and compete with us, I believe the certificate would potentially allow them to do that, I'm not for sure. I don't see anybody doing that, because there was a lot of different, I'll put it to you this way, the hospital is often divided into state of being a hospital to someone that had their name on the building, and they opted out of it. Does that help clarify on that? And I'm not trying to be ugly, but I'm just telling you, it's the, the name on the building was representative of, of really the person that stepped up and said, yeah, they're doing something.
The only other thing I had was, is just curious what you're doing with the rest of the facility.
Do you have any positive comments this morning?
No, these are positive, I mean, it's, it's, it helps, I just had curious questions, you know, and it's questions that people have asked me and I'll, so. The rest of the facility, you have the emergency room on one side, and you have the inpatient room on the other side, are you incorporating the whole power of the facility into emergency department, or are you going to break it up into offices?
Well, actually, we don't have any future plans for the building, it's not part of the emergency room. Right now, the emergency department, you have, of course, laboratory, you have pharmacy, you've got, we got... You have pharmacy. You've got radiology that supports that emergency department. The rest of the inpatient office is up to, we live in the cafeteria and all the inpatient beds. We're just kind of leaving there. Uh we purchased all the beds and everything else in there. Uh we're gonna leave it intact to that for now. Yeah, that was another question that had been asked to me. It's like, no, we're not gonna turn it into a bingo hall or anything like that. But I tell you, an interesting conversation came up yesterday as whether or not we keep the gifts up. And uh typically in in uh ERs like that, you don't, but we're, we're, we're taking a strong look at keeping that open and run by volunteers. It's a place the community can come in. It's a place where the employees can maybe buy Snickers, buy our birthday card for people. So we, we want to keep that community feeling as much as we can. And so that will probably more than likely be something we keep there. Uh to do that, like I said, it's, it was important volunteers that were on that.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, I think the question that I want to ask and answer, but uh down the road, perhaps if, you know, there's always a need. Would uh and maybe you have an answer, would it be that a hospital would be open up as a hospital facility other than uh urgent care or emergency room, probably down the road? Just a question that I have.
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. It's obviously the elephant in the room. The aspect is blood on the border for asking you to do. I think, I think like Mr. Stilson said, is that the first and foremost, nobody knew COVID was gonna hit us. So to be honest with you, the thoughts that were in my mind and the timeframe that potentially do change is completely different now. And I'll be honest with you, because we're all working in healthcare and that's our territory as to how we move forward. I mean, my hospital looks different today. We're getting invited because of socially distanced and there's roads and people are getting passed on. We didn't look like that last year. People were yelling in the lounge and having their Starbucks coffees. How COVID affects us moving forward, the demand for beds, so right now in the state, the state hospital bed capacity is greater than fifty percent. Meaning that half of the hospital beds in the entire state of Florida are open. So then adding kind of beds or for people to say that we need more hospital beds, even from a federal, state, county, level, it's gonna be a really difficult sell. So with that being said, what I will tell you is this, is that we came in here to be successful, okay? We came in here to be successful because it impacts the community that we serve. And then if we move forward as things change, if we bring more economy into the place, we're gonna be a solid partner with this community to do what we need to do uh to move forward. And that's really the best answer I can give right now, because if, if I had a crystal ball before COVID, it was probably about a one to two year crystal ball. My crystal, my crystal ball got real blurry about a month and a half ago, as well as it did for all of us. And we're working through that together. So once again, my commitment is that we're gonna be solid partners in this community to do what's right for the, for the community. I promise.
Yes, sir.
Just a real quick question. You kind of touched on it. Just for fellow colleagues, any upgrades, improvements or services to the ER that have been there that you got or you want to expand on?
Well, uh from an equipment standpoint, we changed out the, to the layperson, they not yet have been available, changed out some EKG machines. Uh where we're bringing in new pharmacy dispensing machines that are gonna be here in six more days. We have a little bit of this all tied, tied to computer systems. Uh the computers uh are all being upgraded. So the poor cafeteria in that place looked like a war zone Thursday night with all the different new technology, upgrade phone lines. We have a really bringing it up through the year twenty twenty. Uh internally, we're gonna be giving a clean sprucing painting. Uh we're gonna get it up to speed with all those things. And then we will just continue to evaluate what we need to replace, whether it be x-ray equipment, CT equipment. Uh we're gonna have to redo the parking lot. Uh the city is helping me with that uh that requirement. It was something we actually had on our list anyway, because it's a little bit of an eyesore. Uh energy potfalls, to be honest with you, is a trigger hazard for people coming in in the facility. But we're, we're, we're here to be successful and we will continue to evaluate, to upgrade everything we need. In healthcare, the one thing I want everybody to know that the most valuable commodity that anybody has is the people that work in it. And the people that will retain their work here, a couple of new people have come in, in the energy level, each two physician levels, is that this community is in very good hands. So uh in my opinion, one of the biggest upgrades we've made is probably making Dr. Nico Christen the medical director, because it's their minds, it's their drive. He pushes me for stuff every day. Like I need this. Uh and that's really where the community's gonna benefit the most. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Chairman, most of my questions, the answers, Mr. Hill, is still mine. I was just asking you what level of care y'all can provide as far as the emergency? If it was increased from what we've had in the past or if it just won't kind of be established for other?
Well, I, to be honest with you, without being truly inside the daily operations of how it was before, you hear things and you hear patients talk to you and you obviously get the feedback from local EMS or other transports, is that uh the company I work for is big on efficiencies. Running it the right way, getting people to the pointy care uh as timely as possible. Everything's time based studies. If you're, if you drive through Lake City and you see our billboards, people say, oh, you guys brag all the time. But you know what? If I can get a patient has a stroke, TDA, within fifteen minutes and save their life, that's something to brag about, right? Because that could be me. It could be you, be a family member of what we're gonna do. Uh I think overall attitude, upgrading equipment, the right medical directorship, I, I think you will see a difference in the emergency level of the care that's being provided out of the hospital. I've already started to feel the energy level. I mean, you can feel the energy level almost different than the first day, which made my heart just swell. But sometimes that takes a little bit of time to get the culture over there and they're ready for it.
The only other question I have, uh I guess, I always have to make first, the beds that are currently not on the ER, the, the, are they now vacant? Or do you still have anyone that aren't in there or is everything transported out?
No, it's only, it's only, it looks just like it did.
But not on our side.
Oh, the people, all the people had to go. And uh there were, we got down to, I think, three transfers that came two days before to finally, finally closing the date there. They shouldn't have been on the same.
So that leads to my question on the, on the virus and the spread, but I know that right now it seems to be going over the curve or cases hopefully start coming down. But on the in case that we have a tick up or need bed space for y'all's facilities and other areas or other hospitals, I know we're at fifty percent eleven now, but they've become needed in the future. Is that something that y'all are open to looking at?
I'm absolutely open to it. I actually had the conversation with, with Mr. Kerry probably a month ago. Cause we, the, the original spike on this was a lot higher than what we actually experienced. And uh so we were looking, I mean, all the way up to if we have to bring in field hospitals or do things like that. Uh to be honest with you, before I brought in a field hospital, I would let the operationally existing space we have to take up for a search. Uh when you get into those types of search plans, you get to that, there's a staffing requirement, there's probably national guard help. And all these things are being looked at, talked about through the EOC, uh relationships with the local Department of Health and the internal from our company, how we would rank that up. So we were, we're closely with this council, the Department of uh from the state and they figured out what would be the best, best way to accommodate a search. But yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I would not discount that it could be a possibility. It would be a lot more sense to use that space or twenty-five beds as a bring in twenty-five bed unit if you set it up, but this doesn't, it's not possible for me. Now, of course, the government could trump me on that and say, no, you're gonna put that out. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we would be. Does that make any difference? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I know you kind of spoke to a little bit, but you can circle back to it, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh I think Chief Andy yourself mentioned that, you know, the council now, people may not be coming out because they're scared. They don't know, right? You know, if it's safer than the other, if they own it, what they consider hard burner or whatever. Uh could you just go to that one more thing? I've been wanting to see years of our community and our, our, our people who know that it is safe to go if you have a problem.
It, it is absolutely safe to go. Um the processes we have in place are for back family members. Uh just to give you an example, up until the government released its order to start yesterday on the fourth, uh we had zero visitors in the hospital. They had a zero visitation policy, which really, believe it or not, created a really weird environment in the hospital. Because part, part of the healing process is these families around, right? So it's great to get that and I feel it's interesting. Tomorrow, we're going back to what's called a based visitation policy, which is a re- reorganization to that, uh which allows one visitor in the hospital. If you're, if you're COVID positive, you obviously still have to do, we have tele-solutions where you can talk to people through uh an iPad or a computer that we will in the room and talk to people. So the interaction is there. We also have daily routers that, uh all their stuff, like you give the seventy's patients to talk to them, to give, to give them at least somebody they talked to. We felt like that was an important part of the healing process. Uh but we're safe. We're, we've got over a hundred surgeries scheduled over the next two to three weeks. Uh the patients that don't have COVID, don't think they have COVID, are coming back into what we would consider a clean environment, riding through, driving out. We're gonna open them in front of the hospital by the uh for about twelve hours a day. We're gonna have screeners there taking temperatures, maybe on mask. I can get you guys all the collateral, although we're sending out our physicians. We actually have libraries where we send the patients uh through physicians. If you want to see those, about being safe. But the utili- the utilization of EMS, utilization of the ER, I, I think it's why everybody talks about COVID like it's uh something that a hospital or a doctor doesn't treat, that they, they put all this notice on these Department of Health to get testing. Everything wrong in the past, you would go to the ER if you're sick and you're coughing, and then you would get tested to find out what's wrong with you. Then you would be placed in the right level of care. Either you can go home and get over this, or we can put you in the hospital and help you out. So I think that's the confidence level people need to know to come back. If you're having heartburn, it's a heart attack, you need to go. I mean, you've bred the horse horse up the country. I will tell you, the people will wait. It's like they've got that pain in their stomach. I would prefer the young guy that waited about four days on the mend to decide if it cost him six days in the hospital or whether he'd just come to the ER like normal. He would have been in any time to go home that day. So those kinds of things, we just need to create confidence in the community that we've been dealing with infectious disease patients ever since I've been alive. So we know how to do that, okay? And we know how to separate it without giving it to everybody. And uh I think it's a point for our community. I think it's just, I mean, from, from Chief Hand's standpoint to the hospital's standpoint, uh people need to be comfortable utilizing our services. It, it is safe. I take very.
I'll follow up and say, uh safety starts there because I get in front of them and I have to pull back my chair for hours.
And then, and you still made it.
I want to go ahead and chairman, I got this one. But uh. The statement on radiology?
Radiology, the study, the outpatient side of that had been shut down in the interim piece of that. Uh COVID, once again, through kind of a weird dynamic, I mean, that is actually something we're looking at getting back online quicker. Uh so that I don't, I don't want to overpromise them and deliver a date that outpatient radiology is something we're. We actually had it in our original plan to do out of the gate, but a lot of things changed in the utilization of services. Nobody was coming to it. You know, nobody's going outpatient imaging either. They're not going to doctors' offices. They're not going outpatient imaging. They're not coming to the ERs. So we, we thought, well, let's take a look and see. Let's get the word out. Let's create confidence and let's get, let's get it out.
So that will be open, something that's.
It will, yeah.
Thank you. Chairman, uh but you have a message, still the questions. I mean, I appreciate that. But a little bit broader question is, is outpatient services in general, not just the radiology, but also the uh some of the services like horoscopies and constables like that, a little bit, you know, they're both doctors be able to do in the future. You plan on opening that back up?
Uh but potentially. It's gonna be interesting to see what that kind of positioning group does, because they have the capacity to do it in their own facilities. So even the one that was performing out here, I had a surgery center in Lake City, so that'll employ a lot of people. Someone kind of already got to go to the hospital, like so. Okay. And so kind of looking to see how we bring that back to me, it's gonna be what the, what's the position, what we can do. Uh do they want to do an outpatient study or something on their own? Uh right now, I would not. There's another surgery center. But if someone needs something clinically, they're still gonna be tapped into the same network of physicians. They're gonna be supported by both of these entities. So if you come to the ER, you get there, uh they stay in that circuit, where it gets confusing for patients, it's like the same thing in Gainesville for something. And then you get into a primary care physician down there or then, then the next thing you know, you're locked into, oh, it's happening to go to Gainesville. Our, our question, Lake City, and the idea for what we're gonna do here in Swinney campus is to try to keep as much cash possible in this community between here and Lake City. Uh so people don't have to go. Obviously, there's gonna be upper level care that you need to go to Gainesville for, uh that we will definitely get you there uh as quickly as we can. Our goal is to keep as much of it here. But it's really a position what, what I can entice them to do.
About any emergency surgeries, uh I know that we don't have cross, so obviously, uh some of those might probably handle, we can ship all the, um, comfortably.
They're gonna, they're gonna come straight down to us. And a lot, believe it or not, a lot of those patients would come to us anyway.
Okay.
So and, and the relationship with the surgeons that are already there are already up pretty well. So it was kind of a, that was kind of an easy transition because they're gonna do each other and, and provide services back. Thank you. You're welcome.
And then a quick. One last one, and you may have already done this. I mean, you've been in touch with Mr. Walton, our Department of Health. What about our other working physicians? Are you guys in the medical office? Are you guys gonna reach out to them or have any?
Believe it or not, they are on my monthly route, and I already talk to all of those guys, everyone. So I personally, as the CEO, getting the car out, the young lady, Kristen Robbins, is my physician relations. She's out here weekly. So we touched them right before we came in. Uh there was a interview with Kristen Robbins, talked to Dr. Kristen, uh about getting him to every single one of these primary care physicians to create that relationship to primary care, straight back to uh that emergency department, helps bring things up. And of course, Dr. Nocke's uh relationship with those guys as well as the hospital and with Dr. Kristen, who keeps that continuity there. But, but yeah, actually, Swinney County's, uh you guys didn't know it, because I haven't come to a lot of these meetings, but I've been here kind of a lot. Okay, probably more than the other company was leading. So uh for me, this is, this is very natural and very, uh just basically straight up.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate your time this morning. I'd like to welcome you all to the community. I understand that there's concern on this board. It's, it's been going on for months and months. We have a lot of concerns, citizens, and uh honestly, the bottom of your cord is that, you know, as they say, the proof is in the pudding. So you got to show us what you're made of and, and take the concerns away from citizens. So let's know that, that there's a, that there's good company there ready to take care of it. And I, you know, as we move forward, we'll um obviously do want to work for it. Having beds here, but it gives, it, this is starting for them. We have a goal.
It's, it's a good starting point. I like the ball on my foot. That's why I do what I do. And uh the thing I ask all of you is, is that before we started last Friday, uh I think we're in an exceptionally good scenario right now to take very great care of the people in this community. And I call on all of you to gain that confidence and people, uh the community, talk to them on the hospital's sake. Uh our relationship, what you can do, the things they do is important to the community. If they feel supported that, then we will see. The proof of the pudding's gonna be if they start utilizing the services, they will come and tell you, oh, my gosh, I just, I just went here and this is really good, okay? And uh so I, I also ask all of you to support us uh as we, as we do our best as far as.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got to say this today very much.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'm, I want to have a discussion. I have some literature here on our desk that has to do with SMOON. We've had a lot of questions and concerns and calls and uh I would like to know what, what would you do, what would you do in your mind?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh I've been studying this thing quite extensively, because as you know, we were in our office last week and the government made this comment about the first pages of Rio Grande, the state of Florida, and specifically left out barber shops and hair salon. I've had a lot of phone calls from people who've been, uh I've spoken with a lot of people outside the community, uh trying to figure out whether or not the board could do something to ease the pain of barber shops and hair salon. I researched the fact that you have an opportunity, might take a look at what the state of Georgia did. They got very exhausted. In fact, there are many more pages than what you see here on steps that the state put together for hair salon and barber shops in state of Georgia. They've been very exhausted. Approached them and they opened everything up. But after I studied this quite some time, particularly Friday night and Saturday, I called the county attorney. We had a conversation. That's never been, um, well, I, I think my, my question was, um, I was hoping you would have a different opinion than what I had concluded. And in fact, I'm letting it speak for itself. This opinion was very much like what I had concluded by the time I got into all of my research. But um it does appear that we're gonna, that the county commission has the ability to mediate what the government has decided on this matter. Most of you are probably aware of the government met with some uh hair charlatans, barbers the other day. It's been well reported. hair charlatans, barbers the other day, it's been well reported. Even then, he said that he was, he's not interested in racing to throw the gates open, just open everything up right now. But he wants exercise and more precaution. So, how about I just deal for a second? I think Mr. Prabat probably summed this up in about one sentence, uh, the conversation that he and I had about this the other day.
Mr. Prabat? I think the, uh, one sentence was, he goes, I told him, hell no. And y'all can't do that. Um, under the governor's order, you can do things that are more restrictive, but you can't create something that would be an essential service. That he hasn't designated all that to do that.
What happened to be due to it?
Well, under, uh, statute two fifty-two, and, uh, two fifty-two fifty, if you were a, a business that attempted to open up, now, let me back up one second. The business can do business if you're hair salon, hair salon. You're still eligible to be able to sell products out of your door. Maybe you sell products online, or sell product outside. It's the personal service of actually doing hair cutting, that type of thing that you're not allowed to do. But if you were an individual that had a business like that, and you decided to open up under two fifty-two fifty, you'd be subject to being charged with a, um, second degree misdemeanor, along with fines and potential jail time, they can go along with that. And in addition, you'd be in violation, uh, Department of Professional Regulations, uh, rules, and you would also be cited in your business, uh, license would be then come under attack. As for you guys, you gentlemen, uh, if you guys wanted to declare that they were an essential service, I think you'd then be answering to the governor, um, and potential that you'd have to go through for a removal process then.
That would be removed from office. And that's the brief conversation that the county attorney and I had the other day. I, I was trying to find a way.
Commissioners, quite frankly, I, I'll just share with you, my daughter is in this business, and she's in this county, and she's in this business, and I've had a lot of conversations with her, and she's made conversations with her coworkers. And like everyone in this county, all of them have been doing their own research, trying to find a way to get around this executive order. Uh, I've spent a great deal of time studying the matter. So when I finally reached out to the county attorney, the frustration, uh, realizing that I could not find an opportunity for the board of county commissioners to get around this executive order, I spoke with the county attorney. And it ultimately came down to the fact that if the county commission defies the order of the government under this executive order, he does have the ability to remove you from office and enforce his executive order. And ultimately, he made that decision, his replacement of someone, serve out your term, built in selection. Now, I'm not saying that that would happen. In fact, I would venture that if sixty-seven county commissions rose up and decided to just allow these businesses to go back to work, he probably would not do that. But that is a possibility. So at this time, um, much, much of my frustration, I can't tell you that I have found a way for this board and county commission to get around the executive order. Uh, and like the county attorney says, the board, every board does have the ability to make it more stringent, but you don't have the ability to dilute the government's executive orders.
I just, sometimes in this office works, maybe, but it's fine to go in the box store, and just kind of weaken there, and just take one in mind. But yeah, I'm just not business owner, can't. Because somebody's actually let pay the bill, because they filled out unemployment six, eight weeks ago, and hadn't received first check, but that's not. I just, I just see a picture there, there's something not quite clear.
It's not right. It's not right. And I guess when I misunderstood what you're saying, even if we did that, and we took the gamble, the chance, uh, someone would come in and take their license, is that what I'm understanding? So.
Their license would be subject to a, for given, uh, even if, even if y'all did it, because it's, it's, a, a local order can't pull the rule of state order. And the government's executive order is the one that's out there right now.
Those licenses, licenses to those businesses are actually issued and regulated by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation under the executive order to read all of it. Uh, often the government for the back of those executive orders can be released and enforced by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. And they can simply fully license, um, their number of things with Department of Business and Professional Regulation. But that's, that's who actually releases that industry.
Comment on that, even if we approved something, that, so they could do back the word, their license is still governed by state law. We have, we, we don't issue them licenses at all at the county. So, I mean, if they pull it, they're done. But I did, I, I, I had met with some salon owners, and they had come up with some ideas, so that they would like, that they're gonna present to the governor, Senator Bradley, Joe Brandon, I asked the copy, and I laid on your, uh, laid on your desk. They also sent me a copy of the sanitation and sterilization course that they have to go through. I didn't make a copy of that for everybody, but I have a copy of it, if I could look at it. I was gonna ask the board, we were doing, uh, they're sending a letter, they've reached out, they got the ears up, Senator Bradley, they've reached out to him, and the AP's working with them. Uh, but I'd like to maybe incorporate some of the stuff that they've sent, and that's in the letter, so, uh, Senator Bradley, also, and Joe Brandon, the office on the half, they, you know, we, uh, we'd like to see him open another new state of the vision. A whole lot of things, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to step out of our people. But I've talked to a lot of them, as well, a part of the view of, and, uh, some concerns that were, that were raised by, you know, personal services that, uh, offered outside the, uh, the business, place of business, uh, some people being allowed to do it, um, some agencies allowing them, uh, when I say government agencies allowing, uh, some people to come in and do that as well, and others being told that you cannot schedule any kind of, uh, uh, personal at-home services with your clients. Uh, and, and yet, some of our agencies have, have allowed, at least that's what I, that's the information I've heard, some of the agencies have allowed someone to come in and cut hair and such. So I, I wanna make sure that, that whatever we do is across board fair. And, um, and, and I realize that if somebody comes in to me as a, let's say, insurance guy, and says, could you come to my house, sit down with me, and fill out form? I mean, if the governor had, had considered that that's not an essential services, then technically I could get in trouble for that. But that doesn't stop the general public from doing, or other agents from doing it as well. And then, you know, of all, of course, you're starting to head on some, uh, in some circumstances, but not, uh, in other, I don't think that that's right. Alan, that's what's happened on the same end. But that is conservative brought to me specifically. But I would, I know we can't, I, I knew before Mr. Prabat had said anything, that's something that we cannot do, is overruled, um, you know, maybe we do something that, uh, don't have, maybe, or the state may do. So we, but we can stand behind all of our, our salons, our business owners, those folks that are, are trying to do something that needs to be done, I think.
But you're saying you wanna do something that's just salon, you're saying other businesses?
Uh, I think what I'm, what I'm, my concern in, in, in for salons is that the reason why I think that they're being, that they're, they should be singled out in this case is important is because the level of, of training that they have to go through, and regulation that they have to go through to maintain their license and to be able to perform the services, it's at a much higher level than, um, than most other personal services like that. Uh, and I think that they, they deserve that. I mean, I, we've heard this from, from, uh, the latest game that we spoke with this, to, uh, our own personal conversations with salon owners, is that these, these regulations are just difficult. But yet, they're the ones that are, uh, that are saying that we can't, we can't do their work. So, I would support going to the governor with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will say that I've acknowledged that there are other county commissions that are reaching out to the governor's office at this time on this very topic. Uh, I've spoken to some of them, I know that they're making their own personal deals, county commissions are, I don't know how many of them are working through their state legislature, representatives of the state legislature. Uh, I would like to compliment Senator Bradley, Representative Brandon for taking an interest in the concerns that we've expressed through them. I know that we've had conference calls with them, some of us. And they've expressed their genuine interest in getting involved, helping us communicate our message back to the governor's office. So I think it's a prime opportunity for us to take advantage of that offer and, um, just step up and express our concerns on this particular topic.
I think the letters are getting attention. It's not coincidence that, um, Orlando mayor sent a letter last week, because he was in Orlando with a salon, uh, in our press conference. I mean, that all happened within the same week. Now, I mean, that's coincidence.
Well, no, it wasn't. Part of it, like, the last coincidence is that they've got a population of over a million.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's, it's, yeah. They've got twenty-four thousand extra voters, and they got five hundred thousand. I mean, I, I get it, but still, uh, a united force across the state, up to the layers, more counties doing it, it did get attention eventually.
Chairman, I, I would like to say that it, it's a second to, something along those lines. He had a barber shop, and it's his life, and he had a family, which is my daughter, Brandon, she's here. So I think, you know, the more that we send, and I know that's small community, you know, we call our reps, or write in, and the government, maybe, maybe some, something here, because this is strange again. Uh, and I, I, I've talked to some of them extensively about it, and, uh, his opinion was that, you know, he got support family, first of all. But he do respect, uh, bringing something back to his family, and, and I truly respect that also. But, uh, maybe, Chairman, if, uh, get together, that he is together, and get each call, maybe, you know, talk to the governor to connect with these businesses, yeah, spirit, you know, yeah.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent supportive of the salon, trying to get some assistance. I'm just a little concerned about those other businesses, very few now, that's left out there, there's still people left out there, and I've.
Maybe we need to, how about those, one person, one?
I mean, that's, that's not ours, but, uh, you know, I've had to play through a pool, but I just.
I don't have a problem including anything that's not open. Um, this is just, uh, happens to be the, the, the one industry that I've been dealing with the most. I'm sure most of y'all have too.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the reason for this is that this is the one example of a hands-on type of business, where you're dealing with close blocks, and there are people, and you can't, can't have a business. A lot of those other businesses that were on that non-essential business list, were on the list because we created a list, in the absence of, when the governor created the executive order, and the absence of them, and town passes created a list of non-essential businesses, they, and the alternative utilizing CDC guidelines, and Miami's executive orders, to create a list of essential businesses. The list that we created was simply merely trying to take all of the businesses that were not on that list, create a list that is a reflection of the businesses that existed in Swan County, in our community, that were not included on the essential business list. A lot of those panels, when you freak out, you go ahead and go back to work. The hair salon, barber shops, we're specifically spoken to, along with some other businesses. Uh, the governor said, no, we're not going to open those right now.
You know, and just, so gyms and bars and places.
Yeah, so we, but I, I just, I understand that, I understand that bars, I'm a little, I'm a little confused about the gyms. I, I just, I understand gyms in big cities, I might, but when you have a gym in a town, that you got ten or twenty people going in, and thousands work through, that just seems to be like, that, those people, I think, to date, they got to make a payment on their place. I mean, they got to make it, they, it's essential to them to make that payment, because if they don't, they're out of, out of place. I mean, that's in fact.
And, and all these businesses, we're talking gyms and hair salon, but they're willing to do it, you know, that, that, let's say, a forty-five degree capacity at the restaurant. They're willing to have a cleaning ritual, you know, they're willing to do what it takes to run the business safely. Uh, they're just not allowed to.
Right. Mr. Chairman, to say, uh, I do that, is, first, Jim, my, my concern about gyms is the amount of cleaning that has to take place. You'd have to have more workers there, you'd have people there constantly cleaning equipment, uh, over and over and over again, every person, simply because of the, the, the type of hands-on type of thing that you got. But if a, a business owner is willing to, to take a list of requirements in order to open, and put them, and put them, and be regulated by them temporarily for this thing is over, I'm okay with it, uh, completely. I just, I look at this as being, if, if we're gonna open restaurants up to personal, uh, to personal service team, where you have waitresses going, and waiters going to people's tables, taking orders, handling food, why aren't allowing these types of services as well that are regulated at a much higher level? Or as high as a level, at least, um, over different agencies? So that's, that's kind of the reason why I signal out these types of services, because of the regulation that's in there. Uh, and like I said, gyms wants, if, if gym owners want to, uh, adhere to a, a series of, uh, of these types of regulations.
I, I'm all in favor of putting the letter together, but I would like to review the, what we include. I'm not tied for everybody, and I can't just tie for one person.
I agree with you. I'm fine with that.
Sorry?
I'm fine with that.
I just, you know, I, I, I'm all about getting a letter out there.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could say this, I think that what was missing when the governor made his announcement Friday was that they did not already have a plan put together with the associated terms and conditions for opening lots of these other businesses. While I reflect on the state of Georgia, when I looked at the list of requirements and terms and conditions for opening hair salons and barber shops in state of Georgia, it was very clear that the state, under the government's direction there, has spent a great deal of time putting those terms and conditions and regulations together. Apparently, that didn't occur, but now it's time, in fact, it's beyond time for that to occur. There should have been, I think, that people already were on this reopening strategy for these terms and conditions. So that the board's pleasure, uh, will put a letter together, will speak to all of these businesses, and tell them it's high time, and try to figure out how they do this, whatever terms and conditions will be public safety, and the same time open these businesses as they, they live in. You know, the unfortunate circumstances associated with all of this is that, uh, we run the risk of seeing good, hardworking, honest people become outlaws, because they've got to put food on the table. And.
It's just gonna get to a point, I mean, when you're not getting any funding from the state, because, you know, at some point, the state has a type of responsibility that their system for filling out assistance was terrible. And.
Still is.
And still is. And they acknowledge that it still is. So, I, I, I just got to deal inside people in Swan County, they have to be able to support their shelf and move forward. And they want to, it's a problem. They want to. They want to, in a safe manner, in a safe manner, try to, try to make a living. And, uh, we have access to the board, I can see it on everybody's face, and we're gonna, we're gonna put a letter together, and it's gonna, and we're gonna get into a whole, we're gonna include our representative matter, Senator, and.
Well, the, the main reason I presented this one is they've already been in touch with Bradley's office, and he's agreed to accept this, um, guidelines they put together. Because that is what Mr. Harris just said, and that's what they're lacking, is a guideline that forms a follow-up. And he thinks they would put something together from their industry that he would be willing to present to the task force, and they can do to the governor. So that, that's what they were just asking for, is, is support, or us to support them with their efforts. Fair enough?
Yeah, consensus agreement of the motion?
Why don't you go ahead and vote, and just, uh, direct the chairman, the council administrator to put that letter together, so we can demonstrate that, that it wasn't a war voting.
Somebody can watch them, we put a letter together, to represent the businesses that are still closed, to advocate for them, advocate. that are still closed, to advocate for them, advocate for the government, Senator, representatives, we read everything, say...
I'll vote for it, I'll put it down.
I'll say, second, I'll put it down, I'll vote for it, I, I'll oppose, same time, motion carries.
Thank you, then. Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to run Mr. Jimmy Norris, Department of Commerce.
Well, I was coming up, I was going to say, I was going to wear my t-shirt today, over my other shirts, and I wanted, maybe we can, maybe I'll do this next, for next meeting, just wear our t-shirts, our shirts, and get out.
Well, that is going to be eventually a part of the plan, is for all of us to pass it through. I don't know, we're, why don't we, so, so, we're, we're all, we are going to get bigger size, we are going to...
Mr. Norris, I've got a direct question for you, because I'm going to get right down to business.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know how that library staff is doing, on getting these numbers up for us.
I know, so, yeah, two to the back, um, I do, well, you ask first, I guess, uh, good, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing well, but I need a haircut, so if somebody gives me product, and I pay for it, and they offer a free haircut, you have to license for a free haircut, I understand. So...
What are the word design, you don't want to say word man, word?
Uh, actually, Commissioner, I, I couldn't be accurate, as you know, we've been struggling a bit with census, and in the previous weeks, the up to, we had averaged a point two-five, this is a daily increase, a point two-five percent, this was back to first April, then as we moved into April, the next two weeks, we dropped to a point one-four, so that's a negative increase on the daily average, uh, are those charts, make it work? Uh, and so, last week, once we, we had a meeting on Monday, and actually the staff at the library, with the help of Ms. Betty, were able to get going, calling people, to date on Monday, they were, they were at three thousand seven hundred seventy-one calls that had been made, six hundred and fifty-nine of them have reported already filling out the census, and then, of course, they assisted the ones that haven't, with either giving them our number, the census home number, or online, they also helped with some people that came in, who set up appointments to fill out the census that needed the help. What we saw this week, a, and again, the meeting was on Monday, the, the report here that I have from Monday through Sunday of last week, shows that we had an average increase of point three-three, up from the point one-four, so that's over two times, close to two and a half times increase. We saw a two-point-three percent increase in the numbers, we went from forty-five point seventy at the beginning of last week to forty-eight. That was the largest increase we've seen from the month of April to date, of course, we're in May now, so you can see the whole month, and I want to let you know that on last Thursday, we saw a point-five percent increase, so that's half a point, and on Friday, we saw a point-nine percent increase, that is almost a whole entire point, and that is the highest one-day percentage since April the third. We do know that the mayor's been going out, and he's been working and contacting folks in our local units, and, and we're still working on other things as well, well, we have been working on some of those things as well. So I think we can clearly see that something has made the numbers jump, and from averaging one percent a week to, you know, two-point-three percent in a week, so as far as I'm concerned, I'd say it's a great success. I can also take it, we could already know the places are competing on our model, so they have taken some of their employees that they have some time, and now they're going out, and I feel that straight along, Mr. Jennifer, the census, like, it doesn't take long for the word to get out. Uh, the chart, the graph I passed you now, is this is the county, and I don't want to bore you with all these numbers, and sit up here and try to just regurgitate them, but as you can see, this map will tell you the high and the low percentages of the county. Uh, we're still struggling on the south end, they're, they're up, and we're increasing, but, but we're still struggling. Uh, i- if you'll notice, when we get over towards downtown Clark, they were more, like I said, they were our lowest district, and now they have continued to climb and continue to do well, and so they're like maybe number five now, like the eleven. The downtown area of the city is the highest participation, at fifty-eight point four percent, uh, if all of our districts are doing that, we would have already surpassed our participation rate, our self-reporting rate in two thousand and ten. Uh, but the New Bern County, the New Bern area to the west, that area's doing really well, and then as you drop, we would south a lot, but, but again, north and south are, as you guys can see on this map, are our two lowest districts, so that's where we need help, that's where if we have people that have connections or know people in those areas, we're working with Bragg again right now, trying to get some more information down there to them, and help get the word out, but as far as the decisions that were made, to, to ask the libraries, and the staff to help us, I, I can't think of anything we could have done that could have jumped those numbers, I don't think it's a mere coincidence that they jumped up that high, so...
I appreciate you, and I appreciate Jim, I'm glad we got some positive going on right, because it's been, it's doubled out on us. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For the benefit of those that may be watching at home, Jimmy, what is the deadline, again, for wrapping up all of this census reporting?
They did move it back to tenth of October, it was originally August, and I think it's actually maybe the thirty-first of October, they asked for some, some timeline, we do think that we may get some of the new records on the ground, possibly in six to eight weeks, uh, which will go around and, and visit people that haven't filled it out to date yet. We don't want to wait on that, because we don't affect county teachers, and depending on what happens with obviously this, you know, coronavirus, or something with the change, and things with the escalation, and that might not ever happen. So we really want to push people to take it upon ourselves to do this, and that's what the census bureau is telling us, that we need to be in charge of making sure we take care of ourselves.
Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
Let me go back to basics.
Yes, sir.
In October?
Yes, sir.
And tell me exactly how people can report on this census information, if they wanted to report today.
Today, you actually go to mytwentytwencensus.gov.
Mytwentytwencensus.gov?
Mytwentytwencensus.gov, and if you go there, click in your address, they'll ask you for your address, you put your address in, takes about five things to fill out the questionnaire. There are some mailings going out at this very time, that you may receive, if you did not receive it the first time, they're doing a second wave of some mailings, they're doing it in, in, in kind of, everybody does receive a mailing at the same time, they're kind of, each parting it out to, at different times, so you can do it that way, the easiest way is going like you do it. Mytwentytwencensus.gov, you can also call my office, which is what the library staff is doing there, they're giving out my office number three-six-four-seventeen-hundred, just in case anybody has any local questions, or we can assist you and talk you through the process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Norris, appreciate your advice this morning, any comments?
Real, real quick.
Yes, sir.
The numbers are down, north and south, you know, if the staff is maybe focusing their calls...
Random, random calls, Ms. Betty and Ms. Betty at the library, or we, they went through the phone book and randomly assigned everybody ages, so they're just randomly going through it sometimes, there's no focus on a certain area, it's all random throughout the county. We may come back and focus after we give them the initial call.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Norris, appreciate your advice this morning.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, item number seven, under dental business, October, Mr. Harris. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, some of them may recall that a couple of years ago, the director of the state level of emergency management, made a decision, the decision, I didn't think it was a very good one at the time, a lot of commissioners didn't either, in fact, a lot of commissioners around the state didn't have much appreciation for it, but this happens, down the time, guy, lifelong bureaucrats that have never worked in the private sector, sometimes they believe they have to come up with a new rule to justify their existence, that's what happened. So this fellow decides that, instead of school boards, who provide ultimately emergency sheltering during times of hurricane and other events, instead of them continuing the many, many years of practice of making direct requests with theme of reimbursement, making their own reimbursement requests for the cost associated with shelter, that all of a sudden county commissions would be a better entity to make those requests on behalf of the school board. But in addition to that, his rule required county commissions to actually make the reimbursement through the school boards, and then the county commissions, seek reimbursement. There is a county commission that I'm aware of everywhere in the state that thought that was a good idea, for a number of reasons, not least of which is that county commissions do not own those buildings, those facilities, or employ personnel that would be utilized to operate those shelters. So we had entered into an agreement a couple of years ago, the board did that, like other county commissions, but the new director of emergency management, had to respond to anything called county commissions throughout the state, decided that he would give down to the local community to decide if they want to continue that practice, or go back to the practice that was in place before. And what was in place before, like I stated, was that if a school opened up their building that's an emergency shelter, they would then, put together all of their expenses and send those for reimbursement, and the county commission was in fault there. And there's really no reason I can think of for the county commission to act as a third partner, to handle that big work, to try to put that information together. And I promise you that the reason that the county, county commission throws up against this rule was that because when we have an event, we literally have many, many hundreds of claims that we are working on, projects that we're working on, in fact, in many cases, it could be hundreds of thousands of requests for reimbursement that we're making. So we have our means absolutely full when those kinds occur, and I, I think that it's appropriate for school boards to handle their own reimbursement requests as the county commissions handle. So I bring that to you today because we received this course of advice from the new director, and they just want to know what we plan to do going forward. Any comments?
Good idea to get it back next school board. Well, Mr. Chairman, it seems that they would, as you said, it's their abilities, their personnel, they would have a better understanding and handle them, go gather that information, if their sounds come to report that information, I'm sure there would be some legal issues, not knowing their facilities, et cetera.
Well, they did it very successfully for all of the years up until two years ago. I'm not aware of any incidents or any problems occurred, when all of the audit have occurred, or all the claims that we make anyway, I'm sure that the same personnel are working with the school board and always did. It worked, it wasn't broken, there was never an intention where it broke, in fact, that wasn't suggested before. Like I said, this, this director just decided that it was going to change, and I'm not in virtual change, if it's an approval, but if it'd be hard pressed for not to prove, it came out that it changed. So I request this board vote to go back to the old process, and let us communicate that back to the director and the school board, because we didn't have it written before that new rule came out. Chairman, do you motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll vote for that. Send it back to the director, and then... Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, got seconded by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harris, any, anything else, Mr. Harris? Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment again on my gratitude for Senator Braggman, Representative Brannan, taking our concerns on, versus us, very open about their passion to ensure that our community does well in this until time, and their desires to step up and help be a facilitator of our message back to the governor's office, I really appreciate that, they spend a great deal of time talking to us, and have committed to continuing doing that going forward, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much for that. At this time, the board, is there any vote, copy?
It's me.
Name and address, man?
Low Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five, women group.
Thank you, sir, welcome this morning.
I've got a whole bunch of stuff, but I ain't gonna be in on it. I'll give Mr. Harris a call, and he won't like me anymore, a whole lot less than I would be. A couple of things, number one, item number seven, thank you, we do not need any more through law person, I mean, adding another level just slows everything down, nothing gets done, number one. Number two, they keep finally getting the bids in and out, awarding for the progress from thirty-six, seventy-nine, why not answer the fourth one?
We're opening that later tomorrow. Do you have a date tomorrow, so that'll be back today? They're opening later today, and then we'll have it on the next agenda.
Good, I, I just didn't understand why we have been a total package of things at all, or...
We split them up, because a lot of the same utilities contractor bid open, they were pretty exhausted, bid specification, back, so it's a different, extra week, or two weeks.
And for Jimmy Norris and the census people, I probably feel mine out, I don't find any other people, but I feel mine online, I care quickly, so I didn't, didn't keep calling with it anymore. Oh, I was glad I was here today to hear about the hospital, I didn't know what was going on with that, so that's good, at least we have the things here, even though they keep on with planning on staying open anyway, it's good to know that where our management's coming from.
Don't feel bad, most of us don't know what's going on with the year.
Yeah, and for Jimmy Norris, when he came up here, I didn't know what he was going to be talking about other than census, but I started to pipe up, just tell him to say everything that he says, he, he kept confidential, and nobody else will know what he says, but I don't think they'd have believed me. Anyway, those are some of the concerns I had, and I think y'all did a pretty good job of handling this.
He said it again, he said it again, clout.
Oh, I think y'all done one to two of a job, given the, the situation and everything.
If I could come, a positive comment from Mr. Hancock, that's great, I appreciate it, because he was a student of the system, he studies in front and back.
Well, yes, my concern is we get so wrapped up in the present that we neglect looking into the future. This commission, the citizens, everyone needs now to pull together, this isn't going to last forever, there may be something down the road, we don't know what the future is, have to keep our eye on, you know, with the budget, and all the programs and the plans that we have, and continue working towards them, and not lose sight of that, if we get so wrapped up in today, we could get it back tomorrow. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome back.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Betty?
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Betty, I see you have a comment you'd like to make. Welcome this morning.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, speak briefly to the latest governors. Okay, for new mandate, I noticed that in that included that libraries and museums could open at twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent capacity. Um, so what I wanted to, I don't know what you're planning locally, um, but I just want to let you know or request that when the time comes, we be able to take that in a phased-in kind of approach. Um, if you would like, uh, at your next meeting, I can bring a plan for you to take a look at or if it needs to go, um, get to Mr. Harris before that plan. I just, um, right now, I'm just kind of concerned. I've been getting a lot of phone calls. So basically what I did say is that we, um, need to wait until there's a segue for us to do it. Uh, phased-in would be something similar to curbside, what we started to plan to do, um, before we had to close. But we will need, um, a while to prepare to open. And that includes being able to invite the community to bring back approximately twenty thousand items that they checked out, um, a month or so ago. All of those have to be returned, processed. And we also need to get our physical building, uh, prepared in terms of signage, process and procedures for the, um, public coming back. So just wanted to, to let you know that and just request that you consider that and allow me to at least present a plan with regards to that, if you're thinking of, um, going with that.
Well, I'm glad you made some plan. As soon as you said phase, uh, that was the first thing that popped in my mind was what's going to be our plan and what's going to be our process moving forward. Um, I think we need to go ahead and start working on that plan and start working on some of the behind the scenes that you're talking about with the building, uh, and open that could be considered, but.
You talked about all the counties when you're speaking to this, did you?
I did.
Would that be cleaning, like, is it cleaning in those buildings before? I know you said twenty-five percent, twenty, twenty-five percent, but a preparation of, could get some of them cleaned, um?
Actually, the buildings, um, are clean. We don't have anyone in there. It's been roaming in areas and what have you. But, uh, for instance, uh, we need to consider how many people will be in a particular aisle at any one given time. How many people even will be in the building at any one time? That includes staff and, uh, the public. Uh, and just the process of how we help people, uh, when they do come. The distancing and, you know, prepare our desk, circulation desks may far approachable.
I would, my thoughts on it would be that a lot of it has to do with children and school-based children, aging children. But we need to tie this in with parks and records some way. I mean, as, as we move forward, that, that's kind of.
Mr. Chairman.
There will be a time to have a conversation on open and I would ask if you let me work with this Betty on this. One thing that we don't want to do is open up a daycare. Uh, I've heard that from lots of people. They don't want to see our libraries become a daycare because everyone is a daycare right now. Because if you want to spread sickness and disease, that's the way to do it. And everyone knows it. That's why the schools have been closed. So we're going to take a very cautious, very careful, uh, thoughtful approach to this. Uh, one thing that we can probably address sooner than later would be the issue of having these materials returned. Uh, that's easy to accomplish. We could go ahead with that as well right now, just come up with the mechanism to receive those.
There's not a drop off.
We do have, um, we do have, um, a drop, a drop box. We have one because, um, why not just maintain it's good to fix it anymore, but it is outside. Uh, but when we open that box drop, uh, like during normal times right now, uh, it would not be unusual for someone to have to come in and empty that drop just in normal times to be able to keep up with the flow of it. But that's what we would do each morning. Um, and actually, you know, the plan sort of speaks to that and, um, the idea of the children, um, and the process of them coming back. And so we do have play equipment that would be moved out, not play equipment, but I mean toys that the kids play with. And also, uh, I do have information with regards to what other libraries are doing in terms of pandering. Um, the concern that people have with regards to that. So.
I'm, I'm just very, I, I think I would like to use that point of strategy, Mr. Harrison, if you let us know what, what they're discussing moving forward. I want to be very cautious with it though. I, I don't want to, I don't, same time as a park, I mean, we're doing very cautious with that slow because we don't want to be responsible for causing any type of concussion.
Exactly. But there's services within the library system that can be utilized, the ebooks, the curbside service.
All of our virtual services, some programming, um, uh, ebooks, um, and, um,
I think with the proper, I think with the proper planning, it can be open with limited contact to the public, uh, having to come in. I, I wouldn't be in favor of just coming in and staying all day. Uh, I mean, I don't know how you feel about managing your computer systems and all that, but that's hands-on stuff. I don't know whether it's open that, they bring their laptops in their car even lots of while, but the parking lot, which is usually available in the parking lot of Lee.
Right. And basically what we would do now is basically what we do with the project that we're working on. Um, for Mr. Harris, um, all of the computers are cleaned afterwards. But it would be best to have a limited number of people that come in. And we would also reduce the amount of time that, um, that patrons and or staff, well, main patrons could be at a computer. We do have a reservation system that will allow us to reprogram it so that if we say, for instance, you've got fifteen minutes, sometimes people just want to check their email or you've got thirty minutes, a lot of people get their social services via, uh, the computers. Uh, the computer will just shut off when it's time to give a warning saying that, um, your session will be over, you know, stop. Right now, it looks like fifteen minutes and it'll come back. Well, we think we program that so that, um, so that we can handle that. And I just want to be clear, I'm not advocating that we open the doors right now, uh, for the public. I just know that when the time comes and because of the phone calls, I get, I would prefer us to have a plan for this.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Uh, I know that you guys have thought this thing, thought about this thing. You didn't have the details on reopening what, what the government, uh, government require. But, um, I want to see our employee, our, our employees start to get back to work and to, to, I know we got some employees that are, are dedicated to the, uh, task of economic development, get, uh, as many people in census handled as possible, but, uh, also to see some additional staff get, start to get back to work too. So, uh, that is going to aid, those staff numbers coming back would aid a lot in the, in the reopening part of it. And, um, it also allows you guys to train them and get, get them up to speed on really what, uh, what's going to look like going forward. So that's my biggest concern. I, I, I understand that the public doesn't necessarily need to be in there, but we also need to put our people back to work as well. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. I mean, I want to see this business. I think you're right to, Mr. Chairman, we can, you know, do this and maybe vague steps if you will. Uh, those items, twenty-seven thousand items you're talking about, whatever, I mean, I want to make sure that whatever employees are handling that are doing the right thing, having the proper PPE to sanitize, to get that back to themselves for the next person. I mean, just a lot of thought need to go into this, but I'm all for it. You know, whatever you guys can put your head together, we, we're doing safely and as quick as possible.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
If you would like, just let us put a plan together. We're not going to create a plan, but I think everyone's familiar with everybody's concerns. That, you know, plan on spread the virus. Any plan that we come up with is going to be subject to the number of increases in our community of this virus, but we may change the plan going forward. So it'll be a flexible plan, but it's going to be very conservative in front of you. Uh, and it'll be slow opening. And I don't mind suggesting right now, very comfortably, it's going to be a slow, very slow opening. Everybody will be familiar with the plan and do it. Important thing, like I said, right now is having the ability to receive these materials back in, have the personnel trained to clean them. We also have employees that really are conscious themselves. Got one to come back right now. I'm aware of that. Because we've communicated with some of those that have said, hey, we're not in a big hurry to come back right now because we recognize that this virus is spreading. So we're taking all those things into consideration. Just letting you know the purpose of the plan and share that with you as we continue to put that together.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
Thank you.
You have a good day. Ms. Betty, one question real quick. On the ebook service, do you have to come into the library to check that out or is there, can you go onto the website?
No, um, actually, you don't have to come into the library. And what we did was to, uh, adjust our, um, registration process so that, um, if someone wanted to use it and couldn't get into it, our, it would be, it's a phone call to us and their, um, their card ID or what have you would be made, um, so that they could get into it and check out. The thing is, is they have to have a library card or number to do that and that's made because of how it is on our BIM end, that process. But we have a workaround for it. People would like to use it. Uh, we have relaxed the registration process so that a phone call would be all we need right now to say.
So that's currently available?
But everybody that's got library card now, they have the ability to do that.
And that's currently available now?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one quick question for, uh, Mr. Harrison and, um, Ms. Betty is, uh, is this something you guys can put a plan together for a time next week when you have a meeting?
Uh, my time is probably more flexible than Mr. Harris. I think basically I've, um, been given some thought to it, looking, um, nationally at how this is being approached, so.
I would say that we could probably have Frank or Fred for next week for you to take a look at.
We have Frank. I'm, I'm good with that. We've had some patients that you guys have already mentioned, but you need to do, know about having to see all the details. I just want to, there's slowly, we need to drag, drag the field, so I think you just need to get ready and get everything planned, uh, plans all in place. Very good. That's the only reason why I'm asking that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Any other questions or comments from the public?
Check the sound system when you go back and addition that end. Check the sound system.
You like this comment?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Everybody, I can hear everybody. Everybody in bounds works great. Make it waiting when you go back.
It is the first week. All right, it's time we have a post-comment. Uh, Mr. Baker, anything for us?
Nothing further.
Mr. Harrison.
I'm just gonna make a quick comment. Hey, you still here? You're not texting, are you? What was, what was the date that we had worked on? We were, we've been struggling trying to come up with a date for us to get started on our first budget workshop and reconcile that with availability of the buildings. But you can have early voting going on and it appears right now that it's possible, the best thing for us to do would be to have our board meeting that week of your budget workshops on a Monday so that we then have Tuesday and Wednesday to handle your budget workshops. Uh, and I think we've decided which building was live on that Tuesday, Wednesday, the annexes because the supervisor of elections needed it thereafter. So we'll bring that back to you. I want you to be thinking about that, that you work on your calendars. That was the first, uh, meeting of August. Is that correct? Monday the third would be the board meeting if we choose that date and then the fourth and fifth would be your, uh, budget workshops. I hate to read the better of bad news, but these are going to be some tough workshops. Well, they are. We, we aren't sure about the revenue yet. Uh, in fact, Mr. Baker and I were speaking about that earlier. I spoke to other people in the finance department. Uh, I think I shared before, we are holding off on large projects right now. We have been the last couple of months, uh, just holding off on all the projects that we can in anticipation that we're going to see a reduction in state revenue. So, Mr. Chairman, I would agree, we're going to be tough budget workshops. But we have done all that we could to prepare going into this as we can do at this time. So hopefully it won't be very painful, but we've been very conservative in our approach of spending what was already allocated during the year.
Anything further?
That's.
Post-comments potentially.
Haven't any.
Thank you, sir.
Don't have any.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Damon.
Hey, I just, one comment. Uh, Saturday, they were a group, mostly of, uh, students and their parents, but they put together a little get back to work round in front of the courthouse. And, uh, I attended it for about an hour and a half and they did a great job and I want to go just to shout out to them. Thank them for what they did.
Anything further? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hill.
Uh, don't have a whole lot. I just want to say this, and Randy spoke to it earlier. We did have a conference call. And I won't go into the details with Senator Bradley and Judge Brandon and some of the folks from the DOH. Uh, and I do want to say it was a great conversation. I appreciate Mr. Bradley, Mr. Brandon, and everyone else that was on that call. Appreciate everyone's help and support.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Thank you. I'd just like to say the same thing. It was a, it was a productive phone call, uncomfortable at times phone call. A lot of times I sort of basically get something done, but I was grateful for them for what they did. I'm close with a positive quote for the day, for the week, or the year forward with that. If a drop of water falls on a lake, there is no identity. But if it falls on a leaf, it shines. So choose the best place where your ability shines. Our destiny is not created by the shoes we wear, but by the steps we take.
I have a motion to. Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Damon. That's my, Commissioner Richardson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carried.